Give the public. Thank you, Eric. Eric, can you change our phone numbers names or I put a name on the phone number?
Yeah, I think so. Hang on a sec.
That would be great.
Uh, six nine eighty, that's you, Carol?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I am going to call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty five at six oh one P M. And our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, the second order of business is public speak and I'll get started with Kathy Plazey.
Good evening. Um, I am asking, um, I deferred my public speak to Eric Anderson. When he does his presentation.
Okay, you got it. Uh, Haley Proto.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
All right, Louise Goodwin.
I'm all set, thank you.
Diane Granger.
I'm all set also, thank you very much.
All right, um, Alicia.
I'm all set, thank you.
Tess Graus.
I am all set, sir, thank you.
Um, Marcy.
No, thank you.
Uh, Kimberly Person.
All set, thank you.
Okay, so did I miss anyone? Okay, since I didn't miss anyone, if everybody that's not a member of the board would mute, that would be great and we'll get going. Um, item three additions and changes to the agenda, does anyone on the board uh want to uh add or delete something that's on the agenda? Um, I know that uh we need to add an executive session. Of related to item nine C. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we add an executive session at the end of our meeting to discuss nine C uh public works supervisor. Position and contract.
Well, that is on there, that's item fourteen.
Did I miss it? My bad, I'm okay.
Dan.
All right, then nothing needs to be added, nothing needs to be deleted, is that accurate? Go ahead.
So I I would like to see one thing added and that is item nine H. Um, which is a board of fire commissioners request to trade in the old ambulance when it gets replaced later this month by a new ambulance.
Um, we'll make that nine I if you don't mind. Because we have an H on the agenda.
Same. Okay. Yep.
Um. Jeff Murray is having some trouble logging in, so we're going to hold off for a second on on this. Um, so I'm going to call it nine I um. Fire uh commission. Fire commission. Request to trade in ambulance. Is that accurate, Eric?
That is. And I'll give you the meat of it in my administrator's report, but you should keep a separate agenda, I don't, because the board would want to vote on that one way or the other.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion, uh, do we get Jeff back?
Uh. Okay, he's still listed, but Jeff, can you hear us?
I don't see him on my list.
Just neither.
No, he just dropped, no, he's on my. No, no, I dropped off again.
All right, if if no one, my, uh, well, we should wait and see if he wants to add something.
All right, okay, Jeff is joining again. Hopefully this time it works.
Okay, Jeff, let us know when you're, you can hear us and you can speak. Uh, Eric, are you um? Is there any issue uh of blocking audio from um? Well, if Jeff, if you can hear us, can you come off of mute and speak?
Can you hear me now?
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it was something about my P C, it said it was, it said the audio was shut off by the uh by the toast, so it's working.
Okay, so we uh we held off, we are on um the point of adding a one item Eric requested to uh that the fire commission added to uh add an item, so I'm going to uh, uh, do you have anything, Jeff, that you want to add or delete?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we add uh item nine I uh re- request from the fire commission to trade in uh current ambulance. I got a second on that.
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Carol Lee and uh further discussion, no, uh, we're going to sit there and go through roll call and Krame.
Hi.
Uh, Carol Lee.
Okay.
Yes, hi.
Uh, Jeff Murray.
Hi.
Uh, Scott Person.
Hey.
Jeff McGuire, I, so five, nothing to add, nine I. Okay. Uh, let's get started then. So uh, item four, boards and commission presentations, Eric, do we have anything?
No, we do not.
Okay, item five, any appointments that need to be uh perform uh done this meeting?
No.
Okay, item six, any resignations?
Nope.
Okay, item seven, town administrator uh report.
Okay. Uh, let me just close that and get to that. So I'm going to talk through what I asked to add to the agenda, um, but you'll need to vote on it on the actual action item. Um, and that is the fire department is looking for permission to trade in its current ambulance when the replacement ambulance arrives next month. Um, the company that's building the ambulance will offer them twenty one thousand in trade for a two thousand and twelve uh ambulance. Um, the replacement cost of the new ambulance is three hundred and thirty four thousand uh, four hundred and eighty three dollars. Um, that will be purchased by the Andover Volunteer Fire Department and then given to the town essentially, which is what they do with all the ambulances. It's paid for by the ambulance billing fund. Um, and but the town owns title and retains purchase or retains the ownership of the ambulance, therefore the they need your permission if they're going to uh traded it. So that's that. Other than that, um, do you want me to go through my report? There's not a ton in it. You know, or do you just want to ask particular questions about things that are in the report since there's, I haven't added a lot to the report since I wrote it?
Uh, why don't you go through it quickly so that if people want to sit there and ask and they hear you say something, it jogs their memory, their mind.
Okay, sure. Bunker Hill Bridge, uh, been working to keep the construction on track um, and stay on top of the pay and reimbursement schedule for the bridge. Uh, there is um. You know, at this point, we're basically caught up with the original schedule, so the expectation is that this bridge will be finished this construction season um and open before winter, hopefully before snowfall. Um, so that's a good result for the town overall, given the delays in the project. In terms of field projects, remember there's two things, we have the EZIQC project for the athletic field improvements, and I know you want to talk about that separately, so I won't go over that now. Um, the senior transportation garage, if you remember, the board authorized me to sign a design only contract with the Gordine Group and Millennium Builders to produce a final design. Um, you know, to push that project forward. Um, we have uh hired a new public works employee, that's George uh Timos. He will start on October thirteenth and we're looking forward to getting that department back up closer to uh full staff. Um, the Long Hill Bridge replacement is still on schedule for next August. Had a couple meetings this month with uh the V H B and a guy named Tom Weldon in terms of what what the next steps are with that bridge. Um, so that's, that is proceeding well. Um, it was delayed because once they uh, the state accepted the fact that they would put up the traffic light at N D, they did that very late in the process, so it wasn't part of the original bid package. So they're revising that now um with the intent that that bid would go out in November for the actual construction company. On October twenty eighth is going to be the meeting where the uh companies, um, the R F P went out a while ago. Um, we delayed the uh reviewing of the R F P for construction administration services. Um, so we should have all the companies in here on October twenty eighth to evaluate the request for quotes from those. Um, and go from there, so that is progressing. Town hall building overall is in pretty good shape. Um, in the packet, there are some additional proposals to finish some electrical work uh both in the community center and elsewhere, but that's, those are separate line items, so we'll deal with them separately. Um, everything else is running fairly smoothly. As a town, um, we seem to have had most of the complaints about dirt bikes uh in town tamped down, so then unfortunately, that I think is in part related to uh the death of one of the youths um that was involved in that, which is unfortunate. So public works, I know we're going to discuss the potential contract uh later on, so I will cover that. And uh that's basically it, I've given the board of selectmen and the board of finance a series of the planning documents. Um, prior to the meeting on October fifteenth, the tri board meeting. So you have basically a projects document, a grants document, and then the building and grounds update, which I also submitted to C I P for review at their next meeting. Uh, so that's basically it, unless you have other questions for me.
Anyone have any questions for Eric uh related to the town administrator's report?
The only question I have, as you said, George was starting on October thirteenth, is that a public works holiday?
Oops, he's starting on the fourteenth. You're right.
Okay, just just wanted to double check on that, Eric, thanks.
Yeah, totally forgot that was an actual holiday.
Okay, thank you, Carol, anything else? Okay, let's move on to um. I'm just trying to see, Eric, where the documents that you have in the packet fit into what we're talking about. So on page seven, after your report or after the new business page, um, we have the Lenko quotes. Where are they going to fit here, so I know where to come back to them?
Right, so give me a couple seconds. I just have too many things open at the moment.
Okay, so they're not, they're new business quote for installation of sub panel and the quote for installation of lights in Andover Public Library.
Yes, that's correct. Those should be new business items.
All right, so we'll move on to um eight. It's which is old business, uh, eight A, the Bunker Hill Bridge update and uh Eric, you gave us that, so that's on track to finish uh as close to the original finish date as we possibly can get it.
Correct.
Uh, any problems with any of the pylon, the testing that was brought up in previous meeting?
No, we're all the testing results subsequent to that have been good. And we accepted their explanation for the testing data that they received.
Okay, eight B, Andover's finest update, um. Carol, I'll ask you, where are we at with that? Are we uh are we satisfied that we're going to start moving forward with that?
I sent over the document that you requested to Eric the day after our meeting. So I'm not sure if that was posted online along with the forums for people to start nominating. I'm sorry, I didn't check the website, see if it's out there.
Eric, can you verify if it was posted and let's make sure that we get a spot on one of the front pages so that we can at least have it visible to the residents?
Okay. Carol, you'll probably need to resend it to me because I don't uh, I don't recall having seen it, which is not to say you didn't send it. Um, but uh, send it to me again.
Okay, I'll send it right after the meeting is over.
Okay. Sorry about that.
All right, eight C, the status of the veteran field improvement?
Uh, so there were a series of questions raised about that. I don't know whether you want to go into that now, we certainly can't. Um, so in the uh intervening time, I did set up a meeting with D E C D, which is Department of Economic and Community Development. Um, and I gave them the revised spending proposal. So what's happening now is the two different grants administrators from D E C D, one that covers the steep program and the one that covers legislative funding are talking, um, and I gave them essentially two options. The option, because when we did the original steep grant proposal, we said this was phase two of a multi-phase program, which says essentially that we're going to do work outside of this anyway. Um, that either uh, and I gave them what it proposed combined spending uh plan would be for both grants uh broken out. Uh, but I also said that if they don't want to do that, we will happily break this into two, you know, and essentially do the steep grant as phase two and spend the remaining money as phase three. Um, and just, you know, split the project with Gordine into two separate projects, which, so they're getting back to me on which is their preferred method for dealing with that. Um, once I know that, I will s- submit both to, and and they're fine with using EZIQC. Um, that's a program both or both grant administrators are comfortable with, um, because a lot of other towns have used that. So my goal is to get this thing to final signature sometime in early November. And the reason is, we know if we get to December, we're looking at a six percent increase in the cost of the playground. Um, so I'm trying to beat that deadline. I have a contract scheduled with Gordon Gordian and have Gordian have already ordered the playground prior to that uh grant going into effect. So the other question was the total budget. Uh, the total budget combined between the two grants plus the town match plus the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving is nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that includes five hundred thousand dollars in steep funding, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a legislative appropriation, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar town match um and ten thousand dollars for from Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Um, and that dollar amount also includes about fifteen thousand dollars in contingency funding. Um, so we are still under the hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget that the town meeting uh originally authorized from the town's perspective. You know, we're still, we're obligated to put in that a hundred and fifty thousand. But given that a a small portion of that is contingency, we're technically still under the budget that we uh originally asked for for the public. So there were some other questions raised, the first was, is public works able to remove the existing well? Um. The answer to that is yes. Um, public works is fully capable of doing it, the only thing public works can't do legally is cap an existing well. That has to be done by a well driller. Um, and we coordinated with Stavens Brothers to do that, so essentially we paid for the grout. We removed the uh the well casing, public works removed the pipe, removed all the wiring and removed all the guts out of the vault. Um, and Stavens Brothers witnessed the pouring of the grout uh in the existing well hole. So that has actually been completed at this point. Um, you know, and it was done legally. So the second question was, how much will finishing the parking area cost? And the answer is not a lot. Um, and the reason is, it's already a full gravel base. And depending on how public works, how cheap you want to go, the only thing we're actually obligated to pave there are two handicapped parking spots. And we could technically legally even get away without that because the law only says they have to be hard dustless surface. Um. We would do that as part of our normal paving operations, we had intended to do some shimming on Riverside, so when Abbey Construction is there doing shimming next year in the spring, we would just have the two spots paved as part of that, so our costs are, you know, a portion of a day rental or a portion of a day labor for Abbey Construction and the cost of liquid asphalt. Um, we could potentially do the parking lot. Anything that needs to be done with gravel from the town's pit, I would prefer to use coit uh to top that material, the rest of the gravel lot with some good process. And it looks like there's somewhere around three thousand dollars to four thousand dollars in profit. Um, or product that would be put down there. Um, and if we get to that part, we would spend that out of contingency uh at that point, so it wouldn't really affect the budget. Uh, next question, what are the hazardous materials? And who will handle them? We have no known hazardous materials on site. Um, that is something most contractors build into a contract because it's covered, it's an unknown. So um, you know, normally when you're referring, we're you're removing soil. If you're a contractor, you remove the soil, you have the pile tested, and then as long as it's negative, you just have a pile of gravel uh to deal with. Um, being that it's the town, the town can simply move its gravel from one location to another, which we do regularly when we take gravel out of the pit. So there shouldn't be any issues with that. As far as invasive species, that area will be, uh, we will chip the material into the back of one of the public works trucks that will probably occur starting this week. Um, and we're just going to deposit it at the Andover Town Pit, um, which is full of the same invasives anyway, as is most of the town. Uh, the only reason the thing on there was about invasives was on there in the beginning is the inland wetlands commission as part of their uh approval said, hey, while you're at it, um, why don't you tear out the invasives that are right behind the project area? And since it was a relatively low cost thing for us to do, we agreed to do that uh as part of that. Are there any other costs behind besides public work salary associated with these in-kind services? Yeah, we we bought about two cubic yards of of grout. So that's probably, I think it's it's a little cheaper than concrete mix, but not much, it's basically just Portland cement and sand. Um, so it's equivalent to a couple yards. So I'm guessing that's under five hundred dollars. Uh, and we may end up bringing in some process from point to finish off the parking area, we could skip it if we have to. Um, there's none there now, but it would be a better service. So those are all the questions that I have, unless you have further questions for me related to that project.
The only other question I had, Eric, was it started as three pickleball courts? I know now that it's up to four pickleball courts, but was there any consideration at all for putting in maybe a basketball court or a tennis or volleyball court rather than four pickleball courts?
Um, that would be a question for the field committee. Um. You know, I don't have any real dog in the hunt, we originally uh had it proposed as three pickleball courts and, you know, then just a paved open area. Um, but the committee, I think as a whole, felt it would be smarter to enclose the whole thing as opposed to just three quarters of it. Um, and so they proceeded that way. But is that a possibility? Yeah, sure, it would be a possibility, I I mean, the committee made a recommendation of on what they wanted to see there and that's what ended up in the final quote.
So. Sorry, so did the committee put this out to the public or maybe take into consideration that for a basketball court? Or something, you know, just I mean, pickleball courts are okay, but I'm just thinking not everybody in town plays pickleball, we have a lot of people who play basketball too. Um. Just figuring while we're putting it in, because there are no outdoor basketball courts, there's one at the school that can't be used when school is in session. And it's not really in that great of a condition.
I mean, you would have to ask that question, the board would have that, have to ask that question to the committee. I mean, this is what what is proposed is obviously way different than what we proposed for the initial steep grant, but the board appointed a commission, commi- But the board appointed a commission, committee and said, bring us back proposals. And they brought and shared those proposals with the Board of Selectmen multiple times.
Right. I understand that, Eric. I, I know, but I'm, I was just wondering if there was any consideration. Maybe to ask the general public if they would like to see something other than for pickleball courts. Because like you say, it's way different than what was originally proposed. So maybe, I don't know. Scott, you were on that committee. Could you answer that?
Committee decided that finishing. All four courts to make four pickleball courts. Was much smarter than not having the. Just, just having three courts. Four court, three courts doesn't do you, you can't have a tournament with three courts. You have a tournament, you have to have at least four courts. And you have to, you should finish the, all the courts while you're at it. Can you, could you play basketball on that fourth court? Certainly. Yes, but that's, that's. This is supposed to, the enhancements were supposed to be for pickleball courts, not a basketball.
There was discussions about the basketball courts, to be really honest. The committee brought back to us a basketball court. The committee brought back to us. The committee brought back to us having three courts and an open space for. Recreational purposes, whether it be skateboard or basketball. And the thought was they were going to bring in portable basketball hoops so people could play basketball. To be really honest, Carol, I was against that because I don't think that is an appropriate space to have. A half court basketball or even a full court basketball down there. I think it would be. It would not be in the community's interest. So I would be against having a basketball court down there. So when the committee sat there and brought back to us the four courts, that was fine because. They were going to enclose the whole, whole space in a fence. But the committee did bring to us multiple options. And we had discussed that with them at various times. Even though I understand what you're saying about basketball court, I am not, I would not be in favor of a basketball court down there. It's not.
I understand. I'm just saying it's a shame that we didn't put that out to the people in Andover taxpayers. To see if they would like to see something, you know, a basketball court or something else down there in that area. I hear what you're saying. And I understand, I can imagine your reasoning behind it. But again, it would have been nice to let the people of Andover decide that.
Well, the people of Andover, again, you can say it like it was done in a vacuum. None of this was done in a vacuum. You have, you have multiple people that are on that commission, committee. They had public meetings. They had, they, they, they were presenting this to the public. So please don't state it as if it would be great if we got it out to the public. It was, they were all invited to join that committee. Scott joined that committee on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. And how many members are on that committee, Scott?
You're ten? And it was over two years, you know, twice a month. So people had anything to say, I think that we would have heard about it.
I know, but I think a lot of people might not have known about the meetings. I wasn't, I didn't see any of. I tried looking it up online to see how many agendas were out there and. That's all.
All right. Possible in the future to put in the basketball court or two? In the veterans field area? Is there space down there to someday expand that?
There's space, there's space across the street on the softball field that doesn't get used. There's space.
So then maybe we can do that in the future.
I know what we'd have to do to get to that done, but there's, there's space there. There are, there are. It would be difficult, Eric. I do understand what you're saying, but. No, it's a. And there's always opportunities if you're creative enough to try to figure it out. So you could. And there are other areas in town if we chose to do something additional to sit there and give an outdoor recreational for basketball. We could find a different location or we could find a location down there. But it's just how creative we are. So at this point in time, we have the recommendation for. The four pickleball courts and for the playground for, for children. And I believe I read also that there's. A gazebo or a pavilion.
A big pavilion, yeah.
So the question and ended up being Carol, and this came from you was. Do we go to town meeting on the legislative funding that we received related to this? To a recreational funding for, that was coming through M D Ramton and, and Representative Weir. So that was the question. Attorney O'Brien sent us some information as an opinion as to what he thought. Let's discuss that. So we're all out in the open as to what we're doing related to this project.
I did see that attorney opinion this morning. I don't know if Dennis is on with us, but. I received five pages. Only three of the pages had information on them. I'm wondering if that. If the three pages was the last page or if something happened to page four and five and maybe they were scanned in.
You know how Dennis. I thought he sent us a word document, to be really honest. He did.
But if you look at page four and five, and usually he closes his opinion with something and then. Attorney Dennis O'Brien, and there's no closing on page three, if you see it. I mean, it does sound like it's the ending, but there's no real closing statement from Dennis. And the only other thing I was going to ask too, if we could have that opinion, maybe just attached. To this month's minutes. Just so that, you know, we went through the process. And got the legal opinion that we don't have to go for another special town meeting. Even though we're over the six hundred and fifty thousand that we proposed to the people in February of twenty four.
This was, it appears to be the completed opinion. Dennis just had two additional pages.
Okay.
He was clicking through. But I will also verify that with him. Make sure, and we can include it in the minute package to, to move out. I mean, the, the question, I mean, I guess I. I, I actually want to go on record as I'm approving. So I, I honestly have no problem. I mean, because to me. We had funding, we have funding and we had a steep grant that we did. And everybody will sit there and understand you're doing phases, but even if you'd not, common sense would tell you if you got additional funding and. You could afford to sit there and do some things that you were looking at doing. That's just a. A common sense approach to financing the project. So.
Right. And I understand that. I'm just thinking like we have a full basement underneath our community and senior center. That isn't finished. And if it were going to be finished for recreational purposes. Maybe we could have had that building completed. At this project stayed in the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. That was originally proposed in February of twenty four. That's all. We just see the push things down the road and. You know, we have an unfinished community center with a kitchen that's semi usable.
Let's, let's go through, let's go through that even and speak about that and talk about.
Eric wants to talk about that.
Carol, what I would say is that. You're right. In an absence of other funding. Or other funding applications, I would kind of agree with that. However, what we have is two years of funding at that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar level. So that's number one. So we'll have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the next fiscal year. To finish the community center. And because it made it through the Senate Appropriations Commission. We have another, you know, federal funding. Legislative request sitting out there that is about three hundred thousand dollars. Which, given the state of the federal government, I don't know whether it will be approved. But if they do fund congressional appropriations this year, it's logical to assume that will get funded. Between those two sources, that gives us around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which is plenty of money to finish the generator project, which in my mind is a much bigger priority. Than finishing the basement and finishing the basement. You know, and probably doing whatever else you have without touching the multi-use building fund. So that's kind of the way I look at structuring those is because I think if we have a little patience. We can finish all those projects without spending town tap dollars. And to me, that's preferable.
You're right, because the one, the community rooms part of the town office building. Is we have no power there if we lose power. So the generator is, I agree with you there. But is the almost three hundred thousand, the two hundred and ninety three thousand dollar. Uh, grant that Senator Murphy resubmitted on our behalf? Is that what you're talking about? Cause in one of your reports, you said two hundred and ninety thousand. Okay. All right.
I may have the exact dollar figures of that. I'm not looking at that grant, grant form right now. Because I submitted it two separate years with two separate dollar amounts, because I changed some of the things. Between the two years because some of the work we'd already done. And also the generator, a year later, the cost for putting generator in had increased. So I mean, in the short term, you know, what we've done is essentially off, authorized Lenko. To put a, the automatic transfer switch. Into the. Community center. And because we have the pipe stubbed to the outside. If we had an extended power outage with the automatic transfer switch there and everything set up. We could bring in a generator and power the facility enough to keep it from freezing up. Which is my big concern. If we, we were out of power for a couple of weeks, you know, we have a town building with no source of heat. So that's my, that's my goal in that and why we pushed that project forward earlier.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions related to the Veterans Memorial Field Project?
Just one question, just one question. Just let's say ten years down the road, pickleball fades as a sport. Can these be converted to a basketball courts or? Tennis courts pretty much easily? Or is it the size restrictions not going to make it, uh, you know. Suitable for that type of activity?
Then you can rotate them ninety degrees and get two tennis courts out of it.
Cause, cause my question is, I see a lot of tennis courts right now being converted to pickleball courts. And I could see in the future, maybe it going back the other way. So I'm just, I'm not saying it's going to, but. You know, stranger things have happened and we've had people discover tennis again or something, you know, and tennis becomes a fad again and we want to. Convert them back from pickleball to tennis. So is this something that we can easily convert back size wise?
There's no internal fencing, correct Scott?
Internal though.
Okay, that's my only question.
Just have a big rectangle.
Cause we do, we do have fads, so things, things do phase out over time. So just to make sure.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Let's get on to. Eight D, the Andover Elementary School RFP for bathroom renovations. So. I'm just going to ask, Eric, do you have any documentation related to the RFP?
I do love.
Jeff, you are on the committee. I'm just going to ask, do you know if the RFP has been finalized? Contractors chosen.
My, my involvement with that was basically advisory for the design. And I, I'd. Communicated to the board of the Andover BOE Chair, Caitlin Greenhouse, that I felt that this. Should have went through the RFP's process through the town at least. That we got the RFP and were able to advertise it, at least through the town because. I don't know who the, I don't know who that person was that, that Fossett O'Neil used for the RFP process. I still, I kind of, I, I asked Caitlin about that and she said they were getting bids. And I just want to make sure we have a fair, honest and open process between. The town and the school and, and that. Things are done in a transparent manner. And that's, that's just one concern of mine. And I communicated, communicated that to Caitlin. I haven't seen any bids. I haven't seen anything related to what was sent out. So I can't really comment to that. Uh, my, my pretty much involvement was to design only at this point, but I did, I did communicate to the board chair that I felt that. This should have at least gone to our website. So it would have been advertised to local contractors if they were invited to bid.
Okay. And, and you told us at our last meeting that this RFP was closed. Is there any change to that information?
Heard anything else.
Okay. Okay. Um, let's move on to eight E, NIP program request for expenditures. Eric, have we gotten anything from?
I do not have an update from Megan. So that's on hold. But we get some. You know, a finalized set of project details back from them.
Okay. All right. Nine, uh, new business. Nine A quote for the installation of the kitchen sub panel and wiring for the dishwasher for the community center.
Yep. So that is in the packet from Lenko. Yeah, it's on page seven.
Page seven and eight. Total for that is fifty six eighteen oh seven.
Correct.
And where would you be taking that from? Multi-use business building fund? Where, what's the plan?
Well, presumably since we had. That put back into the senior center fund for the, the. We had switched paying for the previous electrical work that Lenko was doing. To the rebate check from Kerma, essentially use that to pay for the cost. That refund check was around five thousand dollars. So I would just take the, the remainder out of the multi-use building fund. Because that was, you know, at least in large part intended to be for the community center.
Okay. So in a roundabout way, the plan is to take it out of the multi-use building fund.
Correct.
Even though we got money back from Karma, we have, we had to identify a fund where to put that. We chose to put that in the. Multi-use building fund. So there's additional. Okay, that's, that's not how we should all think about it in my mind. It's just like. We either have money in a fund and we use it out of that fund or we don't. So.
We just put five thousand dollars into that fund. We're going to spend fifty six hundred dollars to do this project if we choose to do it.
And just, just, just for questioning, is this, was this a single bid or was this, was this multi, was this?
This is only a single bid. So if you wanted to go out to bid, it can go out to bid.
Well, I think the dollar threshold is low enough that we could probably do a sole source, but. It looks, it looks, it looks fair and, and justifiable given the work scope, so.
Yeah. And what Rick and I had discussed. Was one of the problems with that is there's a fair amount of drywall work. Needed to get it over to where it needs to be. And the goal is only to do the drywall work once. So what Rick is proposing to. So what Rick is proposing to do is put a, a whole bunch of spare conduits straight from that up through the adjoining wall into the attic. So the, you have the possibility of running something like eight additional circuits in the future. That will be, will have EMT down to the, the panel. So now you don't have to cut any drywall there. Just wherever you drop it down in whatever room you're putting the.
Yeah. How many, how many chases are you talking going up?
I would assume that's gonna, everything's going to go out of at most two chases.
Yeah. And you know what? I'd almost, I'd almost say if we have to spend money for a third chase for voice and data, I'd almost do it if we, if we don't have it existing. Because if we want to put Wi-Fi access or any kind of internet connectivity or camera stuff down there, especially if it becomes a teen center or anything, we want to video monitor it, it's definitely worth it if we're going to cut into the drywall.
Well, there's already three cameras down there in the basement. So the basement's fairly well covered.
Okay. Are they chased? Are they, is it, is there chased back to the central?
Switch? Yeah. Well, all the wirings run in the wall. That was all done.
But that's what I'm saying. If we want to add anything additionally, like connectivity wise, you know, is it, is it worth putting another chase just for data in there? Just something to think about. That's all.
Yeah. The, the only, and, and I'm not opposed to that. What I'm just thinking is that all the data stuff, all the fire alarm stuff goes down to the equipment room. So that, that's already in and in the wall. All the data stuff already comes, the circuits are already run down to there. So I'm not sure we do us.
So, so you're, so is, is our internet access point in the basement?
Yes, because the fiber comes into the basement.
Okay. So if we ever wanted to put a Wi-Fi access point or something on the outside of the building for anything, do we have access to that? If you had to go through the attic?
Uh, we don't.
So that's what I'm just saying, for, for, if it costs us 500 bucks or $700 extra to put an extra chase in, it might be worth it. That's all, that's all I would, that's all I would suggest. Because you know, you're going to find things in the future that you're going to want to install and then you're going to be tearing drywall out again to put another chase in.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, you know, we, we tried as best we could to future proof, but you know, we knew we didn't put enough electrical panels in right off the bat because we didn't have the funds. There is, yeah, there is an existing exterior Wi-Fi. But yeah, I'll, I'll have.
I mean, I mean, we could go outside the building and go up the siding or something. It's, it's going to be kind of ugly, but it'd just be nice to go up through the attic and just put something on the outside of the building if you want to go to access point.
Listen, Jeff's, Jeff's request.
Yeah, I, I.
Then just let's try to sit there and do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I have no, no issues with that. I was just thinking about where it would have to go. I don't.
The funny thing is you never know. You get stuff in the future that comes up, you know, technology wise, and you're like, oh man, I need, I wish I would have put that chase in at the time. And if it costs $500 more, let's just do it and have an extra, have an extra path.
Okay.
Right. So any further discussion on the, this project related to the kitchen wiring? Now, okay, I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign a contract with Lenco Electric Contractors LLC for $5,618.07 to complete the installation of the kitchen sub panel and wiring for the dishwasher for the community center.
Second.
All right. We'll, we'll give that one to Anne Kermey. So Anne Kermey seconded it. Further discussion? So we'll vote, Anne?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Jeff Murray?
Aye.
Scott Persson? Aye. Scott said aye.
Yeah.
Maguire, aye. So five, nothing. Okay, let's go on to nine B, quote for the installation of lights at the end of the library. That item starts on page nine.
So I've had a request from the library for a while. They've never felt that the stairwell walkway lighting to the outside of the building was adequate. I've walked it in the dark, not in the dark, after dark. I don't personally think it's that bad, but you know, it just because it's not bad to me doesn't mean it's, it's not problematic for some other people. So they have requested, you know, the ability to run exterior pathway lighting. You know, so I asked Lenco for a quote for that one also. So that's what you have sitting there. You know, I think that would be, if we were going to do that, I consider that more of a maintenance item. So I would apply that to the building maintenance fund. You know, and fund that through that. If that's something that the commission, the Board of Selectmen's interested in doing.
So is this two components, 45, 56? And 3617? Is this two pieces? There's, there's lighting for the walkway that seems to be 45, 56, and then page 10 is flagpole.
Uh, that is different and we'll talk about that one too. And I'm going to make a suggestion, a separate suggestion for that one.
Can I just ask why we wouldn't take the library lighting out of the multi-use building fund?
We could. I mean, the question is, is that really a maintenance operation or is that a multi-use? If I could, I could see either way. I'm, I'm not opposed to either as the funding mechanism.
The, the light for the flags at Veterans Park, are you suggesting that for multi-use building fund too?
No.
I know it's an excellent, you're going to use that from something else. Okay.
I mean, well, well, let's talk about that one separately.
Okay, separate. I'm sorry. I thought, I thought this was the library. So it's, it's the flagpole at the field. Okay. All right. My apologies. So let's talk first one, the exterior lighting at the library. The total on that project is 4556. Anybody have any problem with that? All right. I will make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign a contract or sign a contract with Lenco Electrical Contractors not to exceed 4556 for the installation of lights. The Andover Public Library to facilitate the illumination of the walking area.
Second, Jeff.
Scott Persson seconded this. Is there any other discussion? I do have one question. So Eric, the library commission is on board with this?
They're the ones who requested it.
Correct.
This satisfies their concerns.
Okay. And it satisfies their concerns, but it's still a priority for them right now. I'm just making sure that the library is there for.
Correct. And honestly, I've been putting this off for a while. They've been bugging me for, you know, maybe not quite a year, but a while.
Uh, anybody have any other questions or any other concerns related to this? Okay. We're going to move to, move the question. Vote Anne Kermey. Aye, you're on mute. You just, okay, say it for me. Anne Kermey. Aye, Carol Lee.
Aye.
Scott Persson?
Aye.
Without a alphabetical order, my apologies. Jeff Murray?
Aye.
Jeff Maguire, aye. Okay, five, nothing. Okay, page 10, Eric, is an estimate for Monument Park flagpole lighting.
Okay, so this was something that didn't fit into the original work due to cost for the, when the field was upgraded. So I guess this is really a question of aesthetics because I've gone down and looked at it repeatedly. And it seems like it's perfectly well illuminated to me. But then again, I've had multiple people complain that the illumination on the flag isn't right and that it's okay if the flag's at half staff. But so basically the lights that are there now illuminate both the flagpole and the, the monuments that are in front of the flagpoles. And what this quote is to basically separate those two, use the existing lighting to light the monuments itself. And then put in the same flagpole lighting essentially that we've gone back in, in the last couple of years at Town Hall and done. And also we redid fairly recently the one at the library. You know, so that each of the three flagpoles has its own uplight. You know, I would agree that it would probably look better aesthetically. I think it would be a good fit, but you know, it's $3,600. Joanne Foran did offer to write a Hartford Foundation for Public Giving Grant to try to see whether she could cover the cost of this. And so I guess my question is, is this something you want to see? You know, if you want to consider this, is this something you want to see done now? Because from soil conditions, it wouldn't be a bad time to disturb the soil and then reseed. You know, for next year? Or do you want to try to wait until this gets done? And then see whether we can grant fund it. So that's really my question for the board is, A, do you want to do this? And B, if so, what, how do you want to handle paying for it?
I just got a question. Are the incandescent lights now or the LEDs?
They're so the, the lights that are there are two different lights. I think at least one's an LED because one got damaged last year and was replaced with an LED. You know, and the other one, I don't know. I'm assuming both the lights that are there now are LED. The, the basic problem is they're trying to light with two lights, essentially three monuments and three flagpoles.
So I'd have to go look at it because I just don't understand why they just can't screw a T in there and just do two light heads and just illuminate because I mean, an LED light draws, you know, less than a quarter of an amp. You know, a hundred watt LED lamp. So I mean, I don't, there's plenty of, there's plenty of capacity there.
Right.
The $3,000 seems awfully high for.
It's really the question of where you're going to light it from. And do you try to light the location? For, because if you're going to light the flagpoles directly from below, then that illumination would actually be installed behind the monuments. So that's kind of what Rick is proposing. The first two LED, the first two lights you've got now just angled a little lower and shine on the monuments themselves. And then three more behind the monuments pointing up at the flagpoles.
Yeah, I just don't know why we don't just tee off and just do some spots on the flagpoles, just on the flags themselves. It just, it makes more sense to do it that way. I mean, if the angle's good, there's, there's no reason we can't illuminate those flags from below with a directed spot. So I, I'd have to look at it. I, I, I'm really not in the loop on where those luminaires are right now. So I have to go, I have to go out and take a walk and see what, see what we're talking about.
I'd like to go look at that too.
And this is not an immediate.
Yeah.
Depending, you know, over the years, a number of people have, have said they don't like the existing lights. But whether we do this now or we do this in six months, you know, I don't think is, is critical to the running of the town. So if you guys want to take a look at it and make a decision how you want to proceed, that seems perfectly acceptable to me.
My suggestion would be to have Joan Foran apply for the grant. If she doesn't get the grant, we'll get alternate funding. And then I'd like to look at it myself and see what the, you know, the direction of the lighting is.
Sure.
But yeah, if it's not, if it's not an immediate need, then I would definitely go after funding.
We should talk to Joan because we should look for additional funding because that really is a very nice area and we should sit there and try to illuminate the old town hall and all of it as, as much as possible, even the bridge if we could, because it is a it is a nice visual look for the community.
Maybe we need to look into it a little deeper.
Yep, no problem. Anybody else have an issue with looking at?
I mean, that was something I was discussing because I know we had some leftover bridge funds even. I don't even know if those got, you know, dissipated or not, but you know, we, I think originally we talked about some kind of solar project on the bridge for, for the lighting there and or even converting that street light that's close by to the bridge lighting and actually providing some luminaires underneath. I think it's just something we should probably create some kind of lighting plan going forward.
I have no problem with everyone taking a look at it because it really is enticing and should be lit up as nice as it possibly can be.
I mean, we're lighting a tunnel in Bolton. I don't know, I, I don't see how we can't find funding to light a bridge in Andover.
All right, let's move on to the next item, which is nine C, the Public Works Supervisor. We're going to sit there and take this up in.
Executive session.
So we'll move on from here. Nine D, tri board.
Yep. So you should have all gotten an announcement by tri board about the tri board meeting. I'm just putting it on there to remind you.
What's the date for the community's benefit?
It is October 15th at 7:00 PM in the community center. A correction, the community room, my error.
Okay, and have we reached out to Jed Larson about hosting that?
Uh, no.
Did, I did. I asked him and he said he would, Eric.
Good. Thank you.
Does anybody have a problem with Jed hosting it? He did a great job with the last one.
I was too.
Good.
Okay. Excellent. Let's make sure that if we can, we can all be there, that would be great. We will sit there and put that in the calendar right now. Seven o'clock, Town Hall, right Eric?
That is correct. And you should have all gotten a direct meeting invite from the Board of Finance Chair.
Yeah, no, I, I know I saw it. It's just, and I know there was discussion out there. I just wanted to announce it to the community because they didn't get the notice. And we are posting that as a meeting?
Presumably yes. I'm pretty sure that's already posted as a meeting.
Let's make sure it's on the calendar. It is. Seven to nine. Okay. All right, let's move on. We're going to move on to item nine E, NECOG Animal Control Cancellation. Eric?
Okay, so NECOG informed me, I don't know, four days ago, five days ago, that starting July, they will no longer be offering animal control services to the town of Andover. Their point is that it's a giant hassle. They're losing a ton of money on it. They're legally obligated to supply it for towns in the. Um they're legally obligated to supply it for towns in the NECOG region. But we're not actually in the region and, you know, they're not looking for other towns to lose money on, so. Uh I don't have a solution in place for that. Um we got a while, but we're gonna need to figure out what we can do for that. Um it's not gonna be pretty, because uh frankly, given the changes in state law. Well regarding uh what you have to have for an animal control facility. Um it would be very difficult, we would be looking at building a standalone animal control facility. If we wanted to bring that in-house. So I think the only real option we have is find somebody. You know, an existing town or municipality that would, would cover Andover also. Um so that's where we're at.
And we ask Hebron to do that again?
We can ask, but since. So, you know, obviously we went down the path of trying to combine and have a three-town. Uh animal control facility between us, Columbia and uh and Hebron. Um Hebron kind of blew that up at the last minute, the last time. Um when they got their preferred location for Public Works shot down. Because that original design incorporated a separate animal control facility. Um since they're probably a couple of years away from making a decision on what they're gonna do now. Um that they can't use their original location. I just don't see them wanting to absorb us in their existing location. So I will ask, but my suspicion is they're not gonna be interested. So I mean, I think we gotta be looking at a Vernon or a Manchester or something like that. Um possibly Coventry, but that would be, you know, more of a stretch.
Okay, can you just keep us informed at future meetings as to what potential options we have on that front?
Yep, I shall do so.
All right. Item nine F is Sustainable Connecticut Certified at Bronze Level?
So um the town of Andover uh met and was. Uh certified as a bronze sustainable CT town. Um so that's a big kudo to the Sustainable CT Committee. And all the work they did, led by Kathy Pelosi, who's also on this uh phone. Um you know, it's a process that took a number of people over multiple departments in different areas of town. To accomplish, so I think that was a great thing, it's nice that they moved us forward. And that we achieved the certification. So I think a lot of credit goes to Kathy and the Sustainable CT Committee. Um so that's pretty much what I have to say for that. There is a award celebration on October twenty eighth at the Goodspeed Opera in East Hat- Haddam. Um it would be nice to have at least one or two representatives from the Board of Selectmen. Uh to attend that on behalf of the town. I know some of the Sustainable CT members will be there. Um but if one or two board members wanted to go to that, that would be great too. Um so kudos, it's something that's been a long time in, in coming. Um basically, the um to get certification, you have to show. You know, progress measurable, um progress in twelve different areas. Um that impact sustainability of town operations. Um so, you know, basically, at this point, the way I look at it is, we've got three years. That we're certified in the goal over the next three years to be trying to re-get the town recertified. As a silver level uh community, which takes more points and, and more effort. So that's basically it, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um and actually Kathy Pelosi, who's on the call, could certainly answer any of your questions for that.
Okay, um can we make sure that we get the names of all the committee members at our next meeting? So that we can do something at that meeting for them, because that's something. Um very positive for the community that they undertook and got accomplished. I, I was looking at the information that was provided, uh all of the. The audit that they went through, I think it's uh extremely positive for the community, so let's make sure we recognize them all at the next meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, anybody have anything else related to that? Okay, let's move on to um nine G, uh capital planning documents.
So I put these back in the packet, I've sent them to the board, it's basically a summary and a snapshot of where we are today. Um and the first one is a list of not all, but the majority of the grants. Large and small, well, not most of the small ones, but a sampling of the small ones. And then the large grants that we've gotten over the last six or so years. Um and then a list of the two ones that we still have outstanding, that we haven't heard back from. Which is a transportation grant to replace the handicapped accessible van. And the second is a legislative appropriation uh through Senator Murphy's office. Um which, you know, it's anybody's guess on those two. My suspicion is we won't get the twenty twenty-five uh disabled transportation grant. It seems like in the past, you know, we've always gotten it the second or third time we applied. So my guess is we'll be applying again for that this year in the spring. Um you know, but maybe we'll get lucky and we'll get that this year. So that's going on currently. The second item was a list of all the grants that are currently active. Um and includes the funding, the funds that we have in the LoSIP uh program. The third document was a project summary, like where we are right now. On the major projects that we've undertaken. Both in bridge and roadwork, what's happening with the athletic fields and building related properties. So that is also in your packet uh to review. Um and I think that from, from my end of things is uh. The reason I wanted this to go out now was so that when you start talking about funding. And spending priorities as a tri board meeting, that you have that information in front of you. And then the last document related to that I sent was the uh report, which I provide. Generally annually to CIP, which is an update of the town buildings and properties. Um basically, what are the conditions, condition ranking? And then at the end of that document is kind of a priority summary. Um of uh the, you know, basically. A, an itemized list across all the buildings of what things need to be done. And then there's a rating code associated with that. And that rating code is basically, what is the goal, what are we attempting to do with this spending? It's either for accessibility, it's to be a better public amenity. Energy efficiency, comfort upgrade, longevity. Or something that's important for public safety and emergency operations. And then there's a priority level, one through five, depending on how important that project is. Um and I weighted that with a number of different things. Uh you know, part of it is how fast any grant funding that we have needs to get spent. Um you know, when I weighted things that are public safety, uh fairly high back. And then the last thing is Appendix Two, which is recommendations for the next budget year. And what we ought to be doing in the next budget year, since we're talking about that uh in the tri board meeting. And I've given this to the Board of Selectmen, uh CIP. Um Board of Finance, and I gave a copy to the Chair of the Board of Ed. So they know what, what our priorities are also. So that's basically on, on that item. Um I'm happy to answer any questions you have related to those items and what my suggestions are.
Good, um the funding for the design, that we need to uh fulfill the design. Funding for the Percy Cook Trail, right, we need to fund another forty percent or something this next year, I don't think that was in that. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, I, I, I didn't see it, you noted it prior to that, that it hadn't been funded. But it, I don't think it was in that you need the funding to, to be passed the next budget cycle. It may be there, but I, I didn't see it.
I'll review and I'll update that, if, if that's not the case. I'm expecting to get back from Barton and Legudis within the next couple of weeks. A final proposal for what it would cost to get to the hundred percent design stage on that project.
A lot of information there, Eric.
Uh one, one thing Eric, I think it would be helpful for the board and for the community is um. Can you get a list of all of the grant funding by year? So, and I would love for you to go back even farther than the last six years. If it's at all possible, I know there's not a lot back there, but I think it would be helpful for the community to see the level of. Grant funding that's been obtained over the last six years, and then if we can go backwards, I, I think it's something that we should have. Readily accessible, all of the grant funding that has been received by the town and what it's been spent on.
Okay, I don't know how I would go back and figure out. Prior to my time, what grants were involved, but the first document I gave you listed all the large grants. And the year of approval, so you should.
And you said you didn't include the small ones, if you could also get the small ones included? So it's a complete listing of all that, that would be helpful. I understand, and I'm not asking that it's done, you know, immediately, but I do think it's. I think this board and I think the community should understand the total grant funding dollars that are received. And how you as the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. Have worked to get things done without using tax dollars. Okay?
Okay, I can try to review and increase. Uh and give you more information about the other small grants.
Even if it's in a spreadsheet, it doesn't need to be in this format, but it can be in a spreadsheet. So the finance department should be able to assist fairly easily, and I, I, I will. Go backwards and look at the state. I will, I will try to go backwards and try to find the other information for you. Um, okay, uh it was a lot of information, it was very helpful to see. And if anybody in the community wants to go through it, it's very interesting, um. Any other questions related to the documents that Eric has presented here? Okay. All right. And um. We'll talk about that another time. Okay, so this goes from page ten or whatever down to. Where is the end of it?
So you're looking for page forty-seven.
Forty-seven, there we go. Okay, uh page forty-seven, there is an email, so this relates to item nine H AES Transportation. So um. We have.
So I, I can give you a written explanation of this. Um for at least the last three years, the town has been allowing AES. To use one of the senior transportation vehicles and just charging them a straight mileage. Reimbursement rate, um which is kind of in the middle of, of what the cost basis is. For a commercial vehicle. Um so, and they've had multiple drivers. And one of the drivers has been filling up the vehicle when it needs gas. And now that person is no longer with the town, and the remaining driver says it's not her job. And that the town should be filling the vehicle up with gas, um which I don't think is. You know, responsible, I mean, they are using the town's fuel card, which is in the building. We've already always paid for the gas, because that's included in the per mileage chart. But what the superintendent seems to think is that we're going to, on a bi-weekly basis. Or whatever, take one of our senior transportation drivers, get in the vehicle that primarily they're the ones that are using. And drive it down uh and fill it up and bring it back, so they don't have to put gas in it. And I personally feel that's unacceptable. Um and that if they're not interested in filling gas, they should find an alternative vehicle. Um or pay that go to, to take their kids. Um you know, that's kind of my take on it.
Let's, let's, let's just get down to it. So this is an issue that the individual, that the, that the school is hiring to drive the van. Does not want to fill the gas up in the van they're driving.
Correct, and it, and the superintendent has decided it's not their problem anyway. That the town should be filling the vehicle up, and they should not have to fill up their vehicle.
All right, we.
The other driver did?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll deal with. Uh we will deal with that at the tri board, or we'll deal with it at Wednesday's meeting with the Board of Education.
Okay.
All right.
I, I, what I didn't want is I didn't want that to cause a confrontation between the community center and the school. And since the agreement is technically between the town and signed by Jeff. You know, after a vote by the board, you know, I think, and there's nothing in there that says precisely what that reimbursement rate. Will cover, um you know, so maybe.
Listen, this is not covering, we're covering the gas, we're paying for the gas.
Yes.
Just filling it up.
Correct.
This, this can't be any. Simpler.
One would think.
I mean, and my question is, do we know, do we, do we have, and do we have a, a, an analysis of the total number of miles driven? Last year?
We do, I don't have that off the tip of my head, but we do have that.
Well, Jeff, it says right in the contract, it's eight and a half miles each way.
No, I know, but what I'm asking Jeff is, how many days are they actually using the van and, and total?
Yeah, how many days they have school times, whatever, we could figure it out.
Because we could go fill it up twice, once every other week, I mean, it's not that big a deal, it's just like.
Oh, so the question is, are all the other senior transportation drivers and all the AES, or all the school bus drivers fill their own buses?
Of course. So this is. We don't have a fuel ferry to go around.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, if you're a driver for a vehicle, is it expected that you fill that vehicle?
Uh as far as I'm concerned, it is.
And all our, no, I'm just saying, all our senior transportation drivers fill their own vehicles. And all the big yellow, I mean, I'm talking to all the Dado drivers fill their own vehicles.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all, that's all, that's the question, that's the only question I had.
Okay, all right, well, we'll try to get a reasonable result on that. All right, um we had a nine I, a fire commission request uh related to the trade-in. Uh of the current ambulance. So Eric, this, the information, uh they're gonna trade it in with the current company that is. That is building the new ambulance that's coming to us.
Correct.
Um. Okay. Even though it is a town asset, it's still part of the fire commission and the fire department's ambulance services. And they're going to have a new vehicle to replace that one. So the question that we're really asking, is the twenty-one thousand dollars an appropriate number for? I mean, that's the only question I have, is twenty-one thousand the right number? I mean, that's the only question I have is twenty-one thousand, the right number?
Twenty-twelve vehicle.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, thirteen-year-old ambulance that's been crashed once pretty hard. Um, I don't think that's a bad number.
Okay. Do we have any, anybody?
The ambulance sales business either.
I know. Does anybody on the board have any issues related to? Um, the, allowing the fire commission to trade in that ambulance for the new vehicle?
And the other thing I would say is that Wally is on the call. If you have direct questions from Wally, I'm sure he can answer them for you.
Well. You know, I know that Wally drives Jeeps and that Jeeps and Wally drives vehicles like me, tries to drive until the very end. So Wally, we'll ask you a question. Is that Jeep worth twenty-one thousand dollars or more? Jeep, that, that ambulance, I'm sorry. Wally might not be able to get off mute.
There it is.
There it is.
Yes.
I love it. Simplicity. Andover simplicity. It's, it's the right number. Okay. All right, um.
There it is.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the uh Andover Fire Commission to uh. Trade in the current ambulance. With the company that is selling the fire commission or, yeah, the fire commission, the new ambulance.
Second, Jeff.
I'll second.
Okay. We'll give that one a spot, Person. Further discussion on that?
I, I would just amend that to say one thing in that. You authorized the town to accept. The donation of the new ambulance. From the Andover Volunteer Fire Department.
How we, how about we do it in two motions?
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to allow the. Fire commission to. Trade in the current ambulance. And the number is going to be in the twenty-one thousand dollar range, but to trade in, so we're authorizing them to trade in a town vehicle. All right, any further discussion on that? Okay, Ann Kermey. Ann Kermey, yes, you're. Vote.
I can't, I can't hear you. I can't hear.
It happened.
All right, okay, uh, Carol Lee.
Hi.
Jeff Murray.
Hi.
Scott Person.
Hi.
Jeff McGuire, hi. All right, um. And um. Then I'll, I'll make another, I'll make a motion that um. We authorize the town of Andover to accept. The donation of a new. Ambulance vehicle from the fire commission. Uh, when available.
Actually, I don't think it's from the fire commission. I think it's technically from the Andover Volunteer. Fire Department. Inc.
Okay. I amend my motion that I authorize the town to accept the donation. Of a twenty-twenty-five ambulance from the Andover Fire Department. Inc. Or the Andover Fire Department Corporation.
Andover Volunteer Fire Department.
Volunteer, volunteer fire department corporation. Carol.
I'll second.
Okay, so now we got Carol Lee on board too. So Carol Lee is seconded. Okay, further discussion on accepting the donation of the ambulance. Um, anything, anybody? All right, uh, Ann Kermey. Uh, okay, I saw Ann Kermey said I. Uh, Carol Lee.
Hi.
Uh, Jeff Murray.
Hi.
Scott Person. Jeff McGuire, I. Okay.
Thank you.
Testing.
Okay, we're going to go on to item ten, uh, approval of the minute meetings from September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, the meetings didn't get in the packet, so we gotta put that off to the next meeting.
Okay, we'll do that. Uh, item eleven, treasures reports, the finance department report, the revenue summary, the town, the summary, town aid, road, preparation transfers. Over expenditure report, summary of audit status and OPM notification. Anybody have any questions related to the treasurer's report?
I do. We were getting an account quick report which showed the checks that were written on a monthly basis. The last one that we received in our, was in our April packet, and that was for the month of March. Is there a reason why we're not getting these anymore?
Not a good one.
Yeah, I would tell you that.
Okay.
Well.
Couple of things. Can you, can you get that back for us? And then also at the last meeting, I requested that we get um. The budget versus act for July through June of twenty-twenty-five. So July twenty-twenty-four through June of twenty-twenty-four, I asked, can you email that out to all the board members? So we can see a. Positional level and it needs to be in the next package. So the town gets it and the town that, the, the. Residents see it and have that information available. So. I would like that. And I also asked last time for balance sheet. I would like that. In the packet. So that we can sit there and see. Even if the fund balances have some adjustments, I can live with adjustments. I just, the more information, the better. And. It gives myself and it gives other residents an understanding of what. Is occurring other than us just spending money. It's like, what do we have? Where are we? How are we? And so on. So I'd like that information as well. So please ask the treasurer's office for that. Okay, does anybody have any questions related to the treasurer's uh information? Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to uh the tax collectors' report, the dashboard, the intake, the collector's update, the delinquent, top delinquents. And the refund requests, so. Last month, the tax collector uh for August collected. And we don't have the September information because we're too close to the end of the month.
Correct.
Okay, for August, they collected two, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Okay. And she did give us September information. Uh, can you ask her to look at her reports and change the year on that? I'm not sure if it's this year or last year. So. On page. Sixty-one, it said September twenty-twenty-four. It could be that we just don't have a change of the document that we were utilizing. None. Just ask her to look at that.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Would kind of make sense to me, so um. We collect in the beginning of the quarter, so July, so we'll have a big collection month in October. So.
Correct.
September, right now. Okay, put together one thirty-seven, nine eighty-three, sixty-eight. And you could also tell. You know, she has the uncollected taxes by year. The majority of those taxes are in twenty-twenty-four, but you can sit there and see how far back they go. And then also on pages sixty-two. You know, through. We'll go through it. This is the delinquent tax. What is the largest uncollected tax accounts? Uh, it goes from sixty-seven and continues down. To. Eighty. Page eighty-one, so you can sit there and see all the largest uncollected tax accounts. Anybody in town that wants to look through there? Very interesting reading. Okay, we have page eighty-two. And it is uh tax refunds totaling one hundred thirty-three dollars and thirteen cents. I'll make a motion that we authorize the repayment of tax refunds totaling one hundred dollars. One hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirteen cents.
Second, Thatcher.
Scott Persona seconded. Further discussion. Voting, uh, Ann Kermey, how do you vote? Ann Kermey raised her hand and said, hi. It's okay. Yeah, um. Carol Lee.
Hi.
Jeff Murray.
Hi.
Scott Person. Scott, you there?
Hi.
Jeff McGuire, I, five, nothing. Okay. Uh, section thirteen. Departmental reports. We have the community and senior center, transportation and, and the programs from the. Senior center. Any questions or remarks related to that? Yeah, I thank Haley and, and Tess for providing this information. And uh, thank you for the hard work. Assessor's office. The building department. Lynn sent us a, an email.
So at the last meeting, you had asked for. More information from the assessor's office. So she attempted to provide you more information. You know, and a breakdown of everything that was uh issued.
Saw that. That was more information.
Yep. Page one oh one and one oh two and one oh three. One oh four. Thank you. All right, and we will look at that. I will look at that after the fact. Um, we also have the blight report.
So while we're talking about that. Um, because it falls under this criteria. Um, we have one builder that's. Fairly angry, um, and he said he was going to come to the board of selectmen, but I don't know whether he's reached out to you or not. He was unhappy because he pulled and paid for permits. For a new building on Shoddy Mill Road. Um, started clearing the land and he pulled both zoning permits and building permits for the town. Um, and then subsequently sold the parcel to the abutter who didn't want a house being built next to him. Um, and then he wanted all his money back for the permits. And I told him basically, we don't refund anybody money for permits once you pull the permits. You know, uh, you paid for the permits. So he's unhappy because he's out of pocket about four thousand dollars. Um, and I said I would bring that up to the board of selectmen. Um, because he felt it was really unfair. Um, as a general policy, we have not returned. You know, if you pull a permit and then later decide you don't want to go through with it. You know, we haven't given anybody any money back. But. To me, you know, you're the executive board of the town, so I think that's worth consideration by the board. As to how you want to proceed in cases like that in the future.
Well, thank you for making us aware of it and it will be addressed at a future meeting if needed.
Okay.
Right?
Fair enough.
Unless anyone else has any issues related to that? Okay, uh, anybody have any questions related to the light, blight report?
I just have one question. Um, we get the blight report and it has forty-eight. Items on there. Twenty-three of them have been resolved and some of them have been resolved for over two years. Is there a way to maybe get those off of the list so we can just see those that are current? It just doesn't seem right to keep them on there for two and three years, that's all.
Uh, I, I think the only reason that they've stayed on there. Is in awful other cases, um. Blight issues keep reoccurring at the same address. Um, so this allows you to keep a running list of everything. That's there. But if your guidance. For the zoning agent is that you don't want anything that's been resolved to show up on the blight. List. Um, I'm sure you would uh agree to that.
Me, myself would like to see historically the. Different blight. Problems.
Yeah, we've had a few that um, that are on that list have been marked resolved, but seem to be. Um, procuring material in their yards, so need to keep an eye on some of them.
Yeah, it's just a list. I don't understand why it's a problem.
Well, the only thing that I would sit there and say is if there, there are, there are. Properties that are repeat offenders and they continue, they, they will, as. It's been stated, they'll pop up. Um, there are some that might be. Carol, what we'll do is we'll sit there and we'll look at that report and we'll sit there and. And uh, get with Eric, maybe Eric can get with the zoning officer and identify if any of those he feels can come off. Uh, I mean, I would sit there and leave it to the zoning agent, and far as I'm concerned, to sit there and, and shrink that report if necessary. If he thinks. There's a location that's going to continue to become a problem. Or is going to stay a problem, then leave it on there. But I would let the zoning enforcement officer do it if it were me. And Scott, I know you're much closer to this. Jeff Murray, I know you're much closer to this, so. Um, I'm going to defer to you guys to.
You think Wayne, Wayne could have an idea of what has happened prior to his. Hire?
Well, you don't need to eliminate the information. You need to hide the rows. You know, that's the whole thing. You can keep the whole spreadsheet and it could be a hundred percent there, but as you print it to provide for the meeting, you can. Minimize the, the rows and that would shrink the. No.
And if they're repeat offenders. Leave them on there, but if they're people who just the one time and they've resolved the issue to keep them on for two or three years, you know. That's all.
All right, let's deal with this at uh, uh, our next meeting and Eric, if you can, talk to the zoning enforcement officer. Sit there and see. What his recommendation is related to it.
Sure.
Is there anything else on the departmental reports that anyone wants to speak about? Okay. Uh, I'm gonna skip fourteen and fifteen. I'm gonna move to item sixteen correspondence. Eric, do we have any?
Nope, on the verbal notification. Uh, from NECOG that they're gonna drop us come July one.
Understood. Okay, um. I'm gonna move on to. Public speak. Uh, it's now after. One second, I'm sorry. Public speak. Let's start with Tess Gross.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Haley Proto.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Diane Granier.
Yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to comment on. Um, one, we'll talk about the blight one that you. You just discussed. I like seeing the whole thing, the whole list. Um, I think it shows that. The, the town is doing something to address the, the blight issue. And I'm always amazed at how many people. Uh, are on that list. And I think that's important to see that. The blight um ordinance is being enforced and um. Uh, I, I'd like to see the whole list. Maybe you could just put the ones that are resolved down at the bottom or something and just. You know, put the ones that are active at the top, something like that. But I think it's important for residents to be able to see that um. The issue is being addressed. So. That's that on that. Um, as always, I'm um delighted to see Eric's um administrative report. Always large and always informative. And I was um delighted to see all the grants that have been um. Received over the past several years. I think that's really important that residents know that it's not all tax dollars that are being spent uh. I think we went several years with. Maybe we were getting grants, we just didn't know about it, but, uh, to see all the grants that are coming forward, I think that's important for residents to see. Um, and I'd like to, I, I see the Palazis are no longer. On the meeting, but, uh, kudos to them for their sustainable Connecticut, uh, bronze, uh. Uh, certification, I know that, uh, Kathy and her team have worked really hard, really long for, um. To, to make that happen, it was a, a long haul and, uh, I applaud her efforts to do that and. Um, the fact that she's gonna continue on and go for the silver is, uh, kudos to her, I think that's, uh, something that Andover can be proud of. Um.
I don't know that she's actually agreed to that yet. But I'm suggesting that that should be her next step.
I, I, I've chatted with her and, uh, yes. She, she's going forward.
All right.
Yeah, so it's like, good for us, good for us, you know, uh, Andover would be, uh. Wonderful if we get more people like Kathy Palazzi involved in things like this, this is a, it's a wonderful thing. Uh, the, the other thing is the lighting at the Monument Park, uh, while you're looking at the lighting. Um, if you could look at the lighting for the big sign that says Andover Veterans Monument Park, um. That sign and the lighting was put in by, um, donations, uh, volunteers. And we took what we could get at the time, and the lighting isn't exactly right. There are spotlights there which make hotspots on the sign, and they really should be, um, a floodlights that more. There's no hotspot on it, it just kind of lights the whole thing evenly, um, and if you're. Getting grants or whatever, if you're looking at the lighting down there, if you could take a look at, at that, uh, the fixtures are fine, just needs to have a. Um, floodlight rather than spotlight on both sides of that. Um. And that, that's pretty much all I have to say about, uh. What, what you've done, I, I think you guys do a wonderful job and thank you all for all you do for us.
All right, thank you, Alicia Lee.
No comment, thank you.
Okay, Mercy Minor.
Hi, uh, just, uh, wanted to say thank you, I. Never ceases to me, amaze me how much you guys accomplish every month, so. Uh, just wanted to say thank you and, uh, I'm impressed, I too, uh, was glad to see the, uh, report on the grants. I know that, uh, a lot has been accomplished in the last few years and, uh, it's really nice to see that on paper. And, uh, you know, how just, it's just amazing how much you, you get done, thank you.
All right, Kimberly Person.
Um, yes, hi, I wanted to talk a little bit about the bathroom renovation project and the lack of the R F P. It concerns me that for years people sit on these committees and they form these policies and plans that we're all supposed to follow. And it seems that this one hasn't been followed in any way. It also concerns me that the leaders of our children in our community are the group that are following the policy. I think that's some food for thought for me, thank you.
Uh, Joanne Hebert.
I'm all set, thank you.
Did I miss anyone? Okay, um. Everyone, uh, thank you very much, we're gonna sit there and put you into a waiting room and go into our executive session right now. Uh, I gotta make a motion that we move to executive session and, uh. That we invite, uh, town administrator Eric Anderson in for the discussion. And you want a second? Carol Lee seconded, okay, um. We'll vote on that, Anne Kermey.
Aye.
Carol Lee.
Aye.
Jeff Murray.
Aye.
Scott Person. Scott Person said yes, Jeff McGuire, aye, so far. Okay. All right, uh, Eric, if you can, um, Community Voice, Tess and Joanne Hebert, if you could.
Jeff, can you hear me now?
Yes, Anne.
Okay, thank you, got it working.
Jeff, Scott, Carol. Five, okay, hang on.
Okay, so, um, we have just, uh, come out of executive session at eleven oh seven, um. And, uh, we have one, uh, item of business or two items of business to conduct, uh. One is I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the town administrator to offer a selected candidate the position as. Town Andover Department of Public Works Supervisor with revised contract to reflect the supervisor position.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jeff. Um, we're gonna, uh, further discussion. Okay, we're gonna vote, uh, Anne Kermey. Uh, Carol Lee.
Aye.
Uh, Jeff Murray.
Aye.
Scott Person. Jeff McGuire. All, all five of us voted, uh, in favor of, of that motion, and then, uh, I don't believe we have anything remaining. The only thing left on, on is a motion of adjourn, adjournment. So let's see.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, that was. A motion made by Jeff Murray, seconded by Carol Lee, uh, all those in favor, we're gonna do it at one time, aye.
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 I have nothing, Eric, thank you very much, and you can, uh, end the recording, thank you. See you guys.